All right. All the folks assembled. This is the Thursday, October 14th meeting of the Technology Committee. If we could put the agenda up, please.
Can you see it?
No, ma'am.
There you go.
I got it. All right. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. A pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, we need an approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you, and discussion. All those in favor, aye.
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 Any public comments?
No, sir.
A motion says we're all absent.
Kind of.
Good, yeah, I've been watching all these science fiction movies and that scared me. All right. Okay, no public comments. The next order of business is approval of the committee meeting minutes from September 9th.
I move we approve the meeting minutes of September 9th.
Okay.
No discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Next item is OE 17.11, broadband expansion. We touched on this last time. And I think. Is this yours, Tanya?
Yes, sir, I'm gonna do this report and then the remaining items will be done by Mark. We split up the tasks for the meeting, so we shared the information or shared the wealth. All right. So OE 17.11 states that we ensure continued engagement with technology partners for broadband expansion. So over the course of the last month and a half, we've had two meetings so far regarding broadband. And everyone can hear me okay? Yep, okay, okay. So our first. Our first meeting was on September 8th with Dr. Rodriguez. Mr. Shohan and I met with Jared Frelix, who's an Assistant County Administrator, and Heather Raff. She's a consultant for Beaufort County. I believe she works at the state level and works as a consultant in this area for other entities. There was a particular discussion of a potential proposal for a satellite-based program called Starlink. Starlink is operated by the SpaceX program, which is a venture of Elon Musk. So you may have heard of SpaceX. It's sort of sitting on the same at Kennedy Space Center. They have an operation there next to NASA. I know because I went to a vacation spot there recently. And so I'm kind of interested in it because they all came together once I got back to the office and had this meeting. So this North America, SpaceX is providing satellite internet services. They're shooting rockets into space, placing satellites into, I think, the lower atmosphere and providing satellite internet services to homeowners or worldwide. It's a relatively new program. They have it in beta form and they do offer an angel sponsorship to allow individual entities to pay for others' internet services on their behalf. So some entities like municipalities are looking to potentially fund this venture with their American Rescue Plan Act funds. The county is discussing with their council a potential pilot program and was just seeking interest from the school district on what we thought, just kind of informing us, educating us about this program, and then just kind of gauging our interest in the area. Of course, nothing was committed. We've since researched this a little more and then we've had another meeting with another another group, which you'll see in this document a little further down. And so, of course, we're still in the just gathering information stage. So this venture would, of course, serve underserved families in rural areas that we would zero in on pockets of areas that were currently underserved or high poverty. So the second meeting we had on September 30th was with a rural utility group. It's a nonprofit organization that lays fiber throughout rural parts of counties throughout the state. So, for example, St. George, Barnwells are some of the areas they have put fiber. And they're looking to propose an option for us to serve. They are slightly into Beaufort County in the northern, very northernmost part of the county and looking to move, extend that fiber into some of our most rural areas in the very northernmost part of the county. It would make a very high-speed connection. Probably one of the best connections you could receive as far as your internet service. And it would be a permanent investment, permanent infrastructure that's laid into the ground and then would allow families the opportunity to connect to that fiber and connect, subscribe with them as the internet service provider. It would be a permanent investment, but it would not connect directly to homes at that point. And we were informed that there are some opportunity programs that provide folks that are lower income to be able to afford at a discounted rate those internet service subscriptions. So this, it was very interesting, very two different proposals that were brought forward with us, to us, and but so we thought, you know, we really know that there's a lot more work being done throughout the state on this topic. So first of all, we want to connect with our Hargray service provider. And so we've reached out to schedule a meeting and we have yet to schedule it. So we're waiting on a response and should be getting that within very shortly. And we'll be setting that up to meet with Hargray to see what their plans are, expansion regarding broadband expansion in our area. And then we know that the state is doing, making some movement and efforts toward on this topic as well. So we definitely want to continue to keep as informed as possible on what their efforts are. So that's all the update I have for today, but we are learning a lot about it. I'm learning a lot about it. Mr. Shohan's been involved in it in many years past, so he has a depth of understanding. But we will continue to have these ongoing conversations until it's such time that we come back with a recommendation, you know, to the board. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay, great.
Thank you. I was reading, sorry, my voice, I'm losing my voice. When you say you met with a utility company, which then it says down here, it says that they would, that you would then basically subscribe with the utility company for internet service provider. Can you explain to me what you mean by utility company? It sounds like we're being purposely vague. I don't want to tip anything off. I just don't know, I'm not sure what they're saying there.
Well, I'm. Mark, you want to pick out one?
Yes, we met with Palmetto Telephone, Rural Telephone Cooperative. So they basically maintain the old Southern Bell and Ma Bell lines for on the telephone and DSL side. They run most of the rural substations throughout South Carolina and they really fill the niche where the bigger players like your Comcast, your Hargrays really haven't moved into these rural areas because of the population factors. It's not cost-effective for those big companies to move in. And since they already have copper lines and some fiber in these areas, they are doing what they can, working with the state ORS and different federal programs to expand their plant as much as possible.
Okay. But they're talking about adding fiber and not using the current infrastructure?
That is correct. At this time, the areas of northern Beaufort County that they're looking to expand in, they do not have current plant in and they would be moving fiber into those areas and subdivisions to support those households.
So I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I'll put my hand back up. I don't know, I get conversational.
Right, right.
Okay. So, because I have talked to a friend at Hargray about this and they, you know, Hargray's looked at it or whatever. And like you said, they've kind of determined it's not cost-effective because of the cost per, you know, foot of cable versus how many houses you have and how spread out they are, right? So would they be, they're not going to run fiber all the way to the house. They're probably running fiber to like a central location and then having, are they going to try and use the copper wire DSL to connect to the fiber?
That's correct. The last mile will more than likely be still on a copper plant.
So what kind of speed would that give the average household on that plan?
It would be around five megs up and 25 megs down. So it would support most of our video conferencing technologies and the different applications our students and teachers use.
Fantastic, okay, thank you.
Dick, anything? I guess not.
He said no.
No.
Okay. This seems like the horizon is a long way off. So, and I know we're all impatient, but this is, this is just the way it is, right? Everybody's moving on it. I'm surprised copper is going to be sufficient, but if you say it is, Mark, I'll take your word for it. Satellite thing, you know, I had some experience with HughesNet and I'm not a big fan of the satellite reliability. So.
Mark, you're on mute.
You're on mute, Mark.
Sorry about that. If I could comment on that a little bit. The HughesNet used a old technology. Their satellites were at 150 miles in geosynchronous orbit. So the download speed, the download was quick, but your upload was still on a copper connection going to a substation to be beamed back up to the satellite. And that was the biggest downfall. Also, being in the geosynchronous orbit, you had a lot more problems with the refraction from clouds and other astrological-based phenomenon. With the low-based, low orbit-based of Starlink, they have found methods to get around that and increase bandwidth. The bandwidth for the Starlink program is looking to be about 110 to 112 megs down and anywhere from 20 to 25 megs up. So it's about four to five times the capabilities of a DSL plant.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you. Angry?
I was just going to respond a little bit. I mean, I had HughesNet as well and I think Starlink's a totally different proposal, but I think it's still a fair ways off before it becomes something that's, you know, an everyday plan for people. But I like the idea of using the copper because we kind of abandoned the DSL infrastructure a while ago and because we had the, but for a rural organization, if they, how fast do you think they could run the fiber out to these nodes? I don't think that would take that long. I don't think it's that far off.
And their estimation is because they're going to be kind of cherry-picking areas, they're still expecting an eight to 12-month installation time. So, but generally speaking, it's generally 18 months to 24 months out when a communications company plans new plant design.
So they'd have to build the plant first. I mean, they're going to do that here first, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just that then, basically, we'd have all that infrastructure. Anyone who has a phone line would be able to get on board, right?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to Battery Point. Battery Point was started in 1995, so it's relatively new. We have fiber out to Robert Smalls and we have copper from Robert Smalls into our subdivision. My subdivision has a large number of people that are working from home. I am at the district office right now because yesterday during the operations committee meeting, I barely could keep abreast of Zoom for that. So, and I've got, I'm supposed to have Hargray for 200 megs. I haven't gotten 200 megs yet. And right now I've been pulling maybe 20, 25 megs because all the, and I've got the dual wire coming into my house and it's because the pipe between Robert Smalls and my neighborhood is just overwhelmed. So I have, it's not as much of a problem perhaps out in the rural areas, but there is still a problem for people, students in my neighborhood, being able to Zoom and the bandwidth required for that until we get fiber to the home. So it's not just a rural issue, but it's also, I can imagine what the heavy suburb areas in Bluffton are like as far as usage. And I don't know if they're already fibered to the house, I doubt it. But that's also a problem I see. Thank you.
That's kind of important because that changes the focus from rural underserved areas to areas that have insufficient bandwidth. Right now, I think we're focused on the rural underserved areas, but is there? When we get, when we got those statistics from Hargray and the other providers that showed us where they weren't serving, I think they told us where they weren't serving, but we couldn't ask the people, but Hargray could tell us. Was there an issue in Bluffton or, I mean, other areas? We know Whale Branch, we know, we know, we know that that's rural, right? But to Dick's point, are there pockets in populated areas that are also deficient?
Yes, sir, there are. Even on Ladies Island, Ladies Island was formerly an old US cable plant, which was only a 550 megahertz plant, which was bought out by Comcast. Unfortunately, the MO for most of the big companies is they buy that small plant and they start generating revenue from it. They don't expand it a lot. It served Ladies Island okay for years, but as Ladies Island continues to grow and add subdivisions, they are starting to tax the bandwidth capable from that megahertz plant and are going to need significant upgrades in that infrastructure also in the future.
Yeah, that seems to be something outside of our purview, though. I'm not sure anybody can step in to alleviate that issue because it's a private business. Although I think the president is trying to do that, but I know that's difficult. All right, Mr. Smith?
Your question said, we definitely do have some of those pockets on St. Helena. And then I was going to say Ladies Island as well, but he said Ladies Island, but yeah, St. Helena and St. Helena. We have those pockets where internet is definitely hard to get or almost incredible to get in certain areas. That's all.
Okay. All right. We have a recommended motion here.
Mrs. Crosby just put her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I couldn't find my, raising my electronic hand fast enough. Just want to make one last point. Another obstacle or an obstacle that we found recently, we attempted to pull data, student data, and did on underserved homes. Basically, in our registration this year, there was a question, do you have internet service? Yes or no? As we registered our students, I know that because I have a child in one of our high schools. And also, we have poverty data in Power School. Our data services folks were able to pull that data, but the problem is we cannot share that data with anyone other that they're by FERPA laws, the Federal Educational Rights and Protection Act. We cannot share that data with county or municipality or outside officials. um, outside officials. So that's one, uh, we can, they can share information with us and we can utilize that maybe pinpoint areas, but, so that is another, um, little hurdle we have to work through as we identify areas. But you're right, we do have a map from, um, across the entire county, and with the exception of Hilton Head, there are pockets throughout the entire county, um, whether it be Bluffton to Sheldon to St. Helena, uh, throughout the county that do have under, underserved areas, so. Um, but I just wanted to let you all know some of the things that we encountered as, as we have begun to look through this process, so.
Did you call my name?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. Got really quiet for a second. Um, I'm going to make the motion here, but also responding to what Tony said. I think the other thing is, for this OE seventeen-eleven, we're talking about one thing. The other piece of this is there's, you know, Whale Branch, there's an actual access. Hilton Head, I'm sure that everyone has access, but whether or not, who's paying the bill? Who's actually like provide, you know, in the, does the internet, does the home have internet? That's the second question, so, um, but I'm prepared to make this motion because I'm going to read it. I feel really confident about it. Are you ready? Okay. I move that the Technology Committee recommended the full board to accept OE seventeen-eleven titled Ensure Continued Engagement with Technology Partners for Broadband Expansion.
A second to motion.
Question? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. So that'll go on the consent agenda?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay. Next. Get that agenda back up. Update on computer labs, um, this is a focal point for Dick. And I guess, Mark, you're gonna, you're gonna take this one?
Um, yes, um, and I'm sorry about the naming scheme I used. I used our internal naming scheme and, uh, just to kind of let you, uh, have an idea of how it's laid out. The first identifying letter signifies either an academy school for River Ridge or Robert Smalls. The D signifies a district office location for the district office and adult ed. Um, E's for elementary, M's for middle, and H's for high school. The reason we use this is we, uh, add this nomenclature to all of our assets, and that way we can tell very quickly if we have an elementary school, um, asset that ends up in a middle school or a high school. Um, so it just very easily helps us when we're looking in active directory and some of the systems we use.
David?
Yes, sir.
So the, the reason I asked for this is, as I walk through these schools, I see empty computer classrooms. To me, these are dinosaurs. This is what we started out when we were thinking about Classroom Twenty-One back in the nineties. And now that we have the one-to-one devices, I wonder why we even have these labs and what utility, uh, we get out of these labs and should we keep upgrading these labs? That's the reason that I brought this up. It's a space issue and it's a utility issue for me.
All right, Mark.
Okay. Some of the main reasons we maintain labs still is because there's a lot of, uh, applications that cannot be run on a student, uh, desktop, I mean, a student laptop. The reason for that is we don't want to pay the Maserati price for something that's going to be used as a Honda Accord most of the time. So, and, uh, for one, um, for one example, um, or I guess our biggest example in mainly our high schools and middle schools would be our Project Lead the Way and CAPE programs. These are very high-end AutoCAD programs, Photoshop programs, um, and that require a lot of computer power. Um, the good thing about the cost of these programs is they're being funded by, um, state and federal grants, so it's not a cost to the district to refresh the equipment in these labs. Um, another way we use them, especially in our elementary school, is to help develop the, um, computer process. They use them for a lot of our Lego labs, um, where they build Lego robotics, uh, Vex robotics, and these programs are run on either Windows or Android, um, systems to help engage the kids in, um, future learning. We have made a strong effort to reduce the amount of labs. Um, I could say, uh, just for one school, uh, to bring out would be, uh, Beaufort High School. Uh, less than five years ago, they had sixteen labs. So it's been a conscious effort that we've worked with instruction and the school administration to help repurpose these labs and let the schools know that there's a lot of stuff that can be done on the student's, uh, laptop, and you don't need these labs for as many programs, only for some specialized applications.
Ingrid?
Yeah, that, I mean, what Mark was saying, you're having kids in the school, my son's going to be in that Project Lead the Way computer program. I think part of it is, though, it's almost a naming problem because in my mind, I see them as technology labs. I mean, we could do three-D printing, we could do computer repair and technology. I think that the idea that this is a computer lab where you come and get your little dot matrix printer to print out your reading assignment, you know, maybe we should just sort of rebrand them a little bit, um, in, you know, for this year, you know, call them like technology labs or Google Maker has a great program. I don't, do we have any Google Maker spaces in, uh, in the schools? But, you know, Mark?
Um, Colleen?
Uh, do you have any? Oh, Colleen, sorry. My ears are stuck up.
Not Google-specific, there are some media centers in some places that have put into Maker spaces, but not Google-specific at this point.
I would just say, you know, Maker Lab idea or something like that would probably give people a better idea, and it makes us sound a little more forward-thinking.
We do have, um, a lot of schools participating in the different, um, Maker Labs, um, and getting their kids into, um, using these, um, advanced printing processes. Um, one thing we have been hesitant to release, eh, to some of the schools that's requested is the lasers. Um, there's a little bit scary to have the lasers in a student setting, um, eyes, fires, um, and just the simple fact that they put the wrong material under this laser, it will give off, um, hazardous fumes if you don't have a fume hood above it. So we have really, um, kind of been hesitant to let any burning or lasers into our schools.
I'm going to go back to Dick and, does this satisfy, uh, what you were looking for, Dick? Or is there a next step you think we should take?
Well, I would truly like to see some data on usage because when I walk through the schools and with the principal, I say, how much is this used? And I get the educator salute. You know, I, I don't really know. Uh, it doesn't seem to be very much. And I've been told, when I started, uh, in this business, uh, putting in Classroom Twenty-One, I was told, well, you gotta have this because laptops will never be capable of supporting the kinds of programs that these desktops, uh, and full PCs will be able to, to, uh, use, and that frankly is not true. Uh, maybe we need more ca, some more capable laptops for these individual students taking higher-level, uh, classes, uh, higher demand, technology demand. It just seems to me that I, I see a classroom that's empty. I don't like to see classrooms that are empty. Uh, that causes me problems when I talk to constituents about our, uh, capacity issues. So, um, I, I think I need to see a little more information on, on use, uh, number of hours, number of times, uh, that each, each, uh, computer in the lab gets used. We should be able to get that kind of use data to say, okay, yeah, we definitely have a use and, uh, it's a cost-effective piece. And, and then I would be convinced, right now, and I see that some schools still have six, uh, some schools have five, some schools have one, some middle schools I'm talking. Here's the middle school with one, here's a middle school with four, there's a middle school with zero, okay? High school with five, high school with six, high school with one. This data causes me some questions.
Hey, uh, Mark, is that doable to do the metering and?
Um, we, we should be able to, uh, break that down a little bit more.
Okay. Is the usage stats? Ingrid? Miss Boatwright?
Kids are, you know, I was just going to comment, kids are going back to desktops. If you're a high-end gamer, you, you don't do it on a laptop, you're doing it on desktops, and kids are building their own desktops now, which I think is a pretty cool thing. So I think that there are things, the way my kids use them, and I have two in college, they don't want to spend a bunch of money on a laptop. A, because someone can just, you know, take it. Um, B, that everything's cloud-based, so all they're looking for a device is a device to access, you know, their day-to-day stuff in the cloud. But if you're going to do high-end gaming or CAD design or Photoshop, you really, I think that, that having a computer lab and having the kids being able to like build and take apart, we have two twelve-million-dollar, not two, we have twelve-million-dollar grants with two programs, biomedical, I think, and, um, cybersecurity. Am I, am I remembering that correctly? I, you know, those computer labs would be great for that, for kids to go in and, and do that kind of work. I don't really think that we can run a really successful cybersecurity out of HP three-sixty, but I don't know, maybe Mark can answer that. But I, I, I think you're right about usage and smart usage, but I definitely think there's still a, a path forward for computer labs in the schools.
Yes, I would definitely agree with, uh, Ms. Boatwright. And for our CAPE program, we have gotten away from the desktops for some of the, uh, more high-end Zbook laptops, um, just for the simple fact that they can bring them out and move around, um, a lab or a different area as they're working on projects, especially in the CAPE areas. Um, it also allows us to lock those in a, uh, laptop cabinet at the end of the day to better secure them.
So the next step, I think, is to get that usage data and then we'll, we'll look and see if we have, uh, something obvious jump out from that that we can act on. Is, you're good with that, Dick?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Multifunctional printers.
So multifunctional printers are the direction that the district wants to go in the future. Um, they have been our steps for the last probably five years. Um, we've been working with multifunction printers. Um, it's a lot easier for us, uh, we have a lot more controls on what's being printed, um, to be able to look at reports on who's been printing, to even meter our users. So, uh, some principals say, okay, you're allowed this much budget a month of printing. Um, one of our biggest things we've tried to accomplish over the last eight years is to stop killing trees and move into the digital age. All of our students use Google Drive, they use Microsoft, they, we have our own sand storage, um, it's just so easy now to move that data electronically that we don't really need to take the time to print. Um, and some of that is a ecosystem thing, um, some people just like to hold the piece of paper in their hands, um, and slowly we're bringing them around. Um, but we do still have some use cases for one-off printers in areas. Um, some of the big things, uh, every building, your bookkeeper, your data specialist, your nurse, your guidance counselor, um, some of your office managers, these are positions that handle a lot of, uh, PII, personal identifiable information, um, and they don't really want that sitting on a printer. Now with our multifunction printers, they do not print out the, whatever you send to them immediately, you have to walk up to them and badge swipe, but still some people feel that some of that data, even if they're sitting there and there's other people in the room, they don't want it to be seen. Um, some of that is also for when IEP meetings and items like that are being held, documents need to be printed up for the parents while they're there, um, so that's some of the use cases we use.
Much like just talking about, um, can we justify all of these printers by usage? Because I know we have meters on all the printers.
Um, for the multifunctional ones, we definitely can. The way we spread those out was on an equity-based, depending on how big the school and how the school was laid out, so that basically each wing had a copy room or a teacher workroom that these would be housed in. Where it gets harder to quantify it is, um, with some of the standalone smaller network printers. Um, we went through a phase in the two thousands and early teens where in new construction, the idea was to put a printer in every classroom or in the workroom between two classrooms. Um, we quickly found out that that was very expensive and not really a way we want to go for the future. Um, but one thing we don't want to do is that if we have these devices that are still functional and we are still got supplies stored for them, we would let the schools use out that toner and that supplies as long as the device still works. We own the device, so it's pretty much a, a win-win. Now, when it breaks, it's out the door.
That makes sense. Dick?
Thank you, David. Uh, couple issues that I had in, in my experience with printers. Uh, when I went to a community college and we had, uh, printer issues, I, I looked at it and found out that we had number of different vendors providing printers. I went out and did a competitive, um, process with multiple vendors to, to handle all the printers, and I was able to save almost thirty percent on costs of printers by doing that, by combining them into one, uh, one vendor. And, uh, I had, they competed, the vendors competed by cost and by, uh, technology. That was number one. Second thing I found out that many of the multifunctional printers were being misused by teachers that were copying copyright material and passing it out into the class. And if you want, really want to get into trouble, violate copyrights will get you there. So, uh, computer printer controls are also essential, and if you have a printer in a classroom, uh, you basically will have one person with maybe a swipe card to be able to authorize it, but you don't have a lot of control over what's printed. The paper costs are tremendous, the, the ink costs are also can be significant, and it is a management issue. When I look at the number of printers that we have, uh, I would just like to hear from Mark on what he does to manage costs and manage, uh, the, uh, the use.
It's extremely hard, and your statements are exactly the reasons why we've been moving away from the standalone printers. Um, you would come into a building and see a stack of flyers for a local community organization being printed on the printers and different items like that. Um, that was one of the biggest reasons for the push for the multifunctional printers and the more control with paper cut, because it's very easy to see that X user just printed off two hundred sheets of a document. Um, another good thing about the multifunctionals is the security aspect. The hard drives in these computers are encrypted, so even if the device was to be stolen or taken from our buildings, any print, um, spool data that was still on that device is not discernible, um, and it's, uh, secure. We don't have that with our older ones. Another good thing about our multifunction ones is we do have a, a contract with Sharp, and anytime there's any firmware updates, their engineers come in and do them. They also come in and do preventive maintenance on them on a regular basis, which is something that is very hard to do when you have, uh, on the network printer side that, we're down to about six hundred now, but, uh, that's a lot of cycles. But that's a lot of cycles by technicians to go check them, work on them when they have jams and malfunctions and do the necessary updates to keep them network viable.
All right, any further questions or is there a next step on this?
The district side, we are steadily working to continue to reduce that number per site as these devices come out of date or either firmware updates are no longer made for them.
Do you have an omnibus contract for your printers or do you have multiple vendors?
For the printers, they have been multiple vendors over the years. For the MFPs, we do have a contract with Sharp. So it's a one-stop shop. And they also carry our HP clotters. Most of our schools maintain a poster printer in their media center for the school. So that is also on our Sharp contract and they will maintain those devices also.
So it seems to me that the only next step would be in the future, I don't know, next year, maybe six months, you'd give us an update on how we're how we're doing getting rid of the of the dinosaurs.
I can do that.
That's the only thing I see unless unless Ingrid or or Dick have a something else. We'll just leave it at that and move on to the next item. And this is Ingrid's focus, the Connect to Learn device contract. And do you want to tee this up, Ingrid? I think you have something specific that you were focused on.
Yeah, I'm not asking my voice. This has been brought to me by a number of parents of how one of the, I'll tell you right off, the one of the main questions is that I think it's six hundred and thirty-five dollars according to that. I had not seen the Connect to Learn handbook before, so that was good. And I just registered my child this year. I think we should probably have, do we have an electronic version of that somewhere that's easy to find?
Absolutely. It's on our webpage under our Connect to Learn documents under families and students.
So on that, on that document, it said it was six hundred and thirty-five dollars to replace the G five and I think five ninety-one to replace the G one. If you go on Amazon, you can get a G five for three twenty. And then addition to which, some of the repair costs are a lot higher than you would have out in the community. So my thought was, we maybe had a contract with HP that basically did this. Or is it possible that if someone, you know, has an issue with the computer, they can take it to a third party and have it repaired or replaced, you know, ordered off Amazon?
As of right now, we maintain a accidental device with HP. So if any other third-party repairer was to touch that device, it would void all warranty. And we do list that in our Connect to Learn documents. We have had parents try to take them apart and fix them theirself. I think one of the biggest values we get is this is not a consumer-grade peripheral. This is a device that has been purposely built for the K-12 industry. So it's had hardened factors in a lot of the corners, a lot of the areas, a lot of the components inside of it. We get that question a lot from families. Hey, I can go to Walmart and buy a three hundred and fifty-dollar, four hundred-dollar computer. And you can. But I guarantee you, if you do the standard five-foot drop test, you won't have as good of results from that device as you would from these hardened devices that we buy from Dell or HP or whoever.
Do we contract with them and they provide those devices to us because we're K through twelve or is that just something, how does that?
All of these vendors are listed on state contract. So what we do is when we get ready to buy new devices, we reach out to all the major vendors. And they do provide pricing that is under state contract because of a big purchase buy. But some of the key things that we have to look for, look at is also our service and warranty processes. We've had certain vendors that said that they would love to take our business and give us, you know, five, ten dollars cheaper on a device. But then we, they would not supply technicians to be in our local area or be housed close by. So then you're boxing up a device, you're mailing it off, you're waiting two weeks to get it back. Our process now is HP has provided two technicians to reside here in Beaufort County and to fix our devices daily. So they come by our schools and pick up devices, repair them and then bring them back to our schools. So we always have to look at the value adds we get from one contract over another.
Okay, so are they dedicated to us, these two HP technicians, or they just basically have a commitment that they'll have technicians in the area?
They have a commitment, there's, they'll have technicians. They are pretty much dedicated to us, but I I can't say whether they're one hundred percent.
How many repairs? Because one thing, you know, that's an issue, if you've got a six hundred and thirty-five dollar replacement cost, not that it's a huge difference between three hundred, how do we handle it when people don't have six hundred and thirty-five dollars? Do we have a process for that?
Basically, any any first repair is free. So with the twenty-dollar technology fee, your first repair is always free. If the device is stolen and you provide us a police report, you will get one device replacement a year free. But the issue comes in, I guess, like you said, if somebody breaks more than one device within that time period. We do work with parents in need. We provide opportunities to do promissory notes and make payments at the school level. And some parents do do that where they may pay five dollars a week for so many weeks to cover the cost of repairs.
Let me interrupt. Mr. Smith's got his hand up and then we'll come back.
Sounds good.
All right, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Within that, I had a parent last year to tell me that, actually at the beginning of this year, that she turned in her, well, actually, Matt, that's in the process of turning these computers in at the end of the year, how do you, how do you bill parents for any, for any damages that you find? What's that process like?
At the end of the year, we do a collection before the kids leave school and that can be all the way up to the last day of school. And these kids are to bring the device by. We do a check-in and usually in our media centers areas where they'll get on the line and they'll bring their device and let it be looked at. At the time it's being looked at, it's roughly assessed for damages and those damages are written out at that time. Usually, they are provided to the parents possibly in a report card or either note is, depending on when the damage is, and the notes could be sent home with the students. Different schools do it a little differently. Some schools require that the kids come in and meet with a AP after any damage incident. We have found that this works well. It keeps the parents, the kids, everybody in the loop. Because sometimes we do know if we hand that piece of paper to a student, it might not make it home to the parents.
Correct. Do you have this process written down anywhere or is there a standard practice of this process anywhere?
We basically do the same process every year. At the same time, we're evaluating these damages. Any damages we evaluate, we also take pictures of and upload with our web help desk tickets. We have found this has been very helpful because a lot of times kids can have a different idea of what initially happened. So we make the kid write out a a form of what the damage was. We compare it to the damages in the photos and we see in person. The last, the HP repair technician is the final say on it, though. They will say whether it's within warranty or not. We've had the devices that were shot with BB guns, devices that were ran over twice, who wanted accidental damage repairs, but unfortunately that is neglect. And that would be at the cost of the parents.
So my question is, again, is where can I find a outline process of what of what's to take place every year? For yeah, for collecting. Is there, is there an air on this?
We basically do our standard collection process. I mean, we have, we don't really have that written out.
That, 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 to me, that's a concern, just because the fact that I, I, at one instant, I have a a parent contacted me and told me that they were contacted at the end of July about a damaged computer. And I was like, why? And so she was like, well, why, why are they contacting me at the end of July and school, but starting August about damaged computer? And 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 that they even just just got to it or something. And I said, that didn't sound right. I said, maybe you contact the school, not redirect it to the school, but you know, that's why I'm asking you about this, because after she contacted me, there's someone else contacting me and said that they had just gotten a phone call as well. That's, that's why I'm asking, what's the process? And do have the process brought out because I couldn't tell them, I was kind of lost and I couldn't point them in the right direction of where to get a understanding of of how it should take place and where where they can find information at.
Some of that could be due to the student circumstances. Was that student in summer school? If that student was in summer school, they kept their device until the end of summer school and that might be why they didn't get that until July. I would look at that on a case-by-case basis.
Right. What, 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 what I'm, what I'm kind of asking for is some type of of AR or some, some type of guidelines where we can, where we can have something. So when we do have this type of case, when we have this type of incident happen, we can understand what the process is and we can go and you can read up on it somewhere so that you can understand it, so that there is a there is a level of expectation across the district and there's a, there's a district standard on, 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 on the, on the process so that parents can understand it and community members. Does that make sense? Am I asking too much, Mr. Scribber? Am I allowed to ask that?
You're certainly allowed to ask it. I think that would end this conversation if we just write up basically what you just outlined, Mark. If you just write that up, have it reviewed to see if there's any loopholes or problems with the wording and then we can put it out there and folks can know what to expect when they turn stuff in. You know, that might short-circuit some questions for the school folks. You know, there's an underlying issue, I think we talked about this before, is that each school may do something differently and I don't know how you're gonna handle that in your write-up. So I understand it's not a it's not a wham bam, thank you, ma'am kind of thing you're gonna have to do. But but that would end this and I think it's reasonable to give them an expectation. And also it might line up all the schools to do the same thing. You know, I don't know. Tanya?
Yes, sir. I think, I, I don't want to put Colleen on the spot here, but I can almost guarantee based on the the quality of her work that we have some internal procedures that we train our staff members on at the school levels. So I'm not gonna ask anything specific today, but I can guarantee that we have something in internal procedures that we use like we do many other tasks throughout the district. And so we will look back and capture what we already do. Because I know as a parent, I have seen consistency when I deliver and my child deliver our, you know, part of vice each year. And they look for the same things every year as we pick up the device or drop it off. So we'll, we'll definitely look into that and and bring back something in our next meeting.
Satisfy you, Mr. Smith?
Yes, along the terms of, I'm just, I'm just, I, I hope, basically, I have something in existence already that we will be able to use to as an, as an outline. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
I don't necessarily believe it needs to be an administrative rule. If there are internal procedures that we do to collect or distribute devices, administrative rule would be something that's more in line, more, more in line with the board policies. This is deep down into the depth of of the operations of the school and the technology department, but I'm certain that we probably, we already have something to that effect and we'll be able to share it with you.
Next meeting, you know, I don't, I don't think it makes a difference whether it's an AR, as long as it's a proper notification to all the parents. That's the point. The point is the parents should know what to expect and here, here's what you, what to expect. I think, I think that's, we'll see what comes at the next meeting, okay? Well, and and we'll see where it's posted and how it's communicated to the parents.
Yeah, okay. So getting back to the issue of, from what I understand from what you're saying, Mr. Shohan, the reason that the HP books, and I know we have iPads, those were donated, right? So the K through two, and so I don't know when that refresh cycle comes up, if we're gonna try and stick with one vendor and go back to like all HP.
Only the devices in pre-K did we have some help with the purchase of them. For our K and first grade, those were purchased with Esser money.
Okay, so we might be, okay, well, that's neither here, because we've, now we've got multiple vendors, but one of the things is, as I understand it, the reason the HPs are more expensive is because they're designed for K through twelve because they're to be more resilient, right, out in the use. So do we track how many repairs we do on an average basis, how many losses we have, how many people, how much money parents are billed? Because when I looked into this a little bit, a lot of districts have different programs. Some districts offer insurance. Because the other thing is technically, if I have a laptop that's stolen or damaged, it could be covered under a homeowner's or renter's policy. And that's not in any of our literature. So I know some districts offer insurance. But I'm getting ahead of myself. I guess my main question here is how big of a problem is this? Because a lot of people are concerned and have been hit with six hundred, seven hundred dollar bills for what is essentially mandated by the district. It may be it's a very rare situation and we can, or is it more common? And then if it is, we are continually running up against a situation where people are getting these large bills and there's frustration and there's inability to pay. I hate to have someone on a promissory note for a six hundred and thirty-five dollar computer, five dollars a week. And then if it's, if it is a big problem, can we look at ways in which we can kind of mitigate that effect on some families, especially, you know, given all of our Esser funding and whatnot?
We have looked at different insurance programs and my kids here in Chatham County, we pay forty-five dollars a kid for insurance. And it's basically you either buy the insurance or every bit of damage is on the parent. The problem we have is it's hard enough for us to collect our twenty-dollar technology fee from all of our students. I don't see how we could collect a higher amount. And then it would get very difficult when you start layering multiple insurance policies and who had it and who didn't on top of each other. But I can definitely get some information for you on some of the different companies that do offer those insurance programs.
What I think I would request and see if this goes with the rest of the committee is just an understanding of how big a problem it is. How many, because I've had three kids and all their devices and knock on wood, so far no one's damaged one. So I don't know if it is a problem, but I'd like to know how big a problem it is, how much money, how many, how many issues we're having with repair, because it is, six hundred and thirty-five dollars is a significant cost. Especially, I know there's a lot of frustration when you think you can get the same device elsewhere for half that money. The other thing I would say about that is I'm not sure it's worth the extra three hundred dollars for the different quarters. That may not be, you know, and then the different strengthening, if we're still getting the same amount of repairs you would without that. So those are kind of my thoughts on it. I think there's a lot of frustration with parents about that issue.
All right, so the next step is to?
Yeah, usage, not the opposite of usage, damage.
And the cost.
Yeah.
Number of incidents and the cost.
And I mean, I'd be interested to know how many parents we have on a promissory note plan or some sort of, you know, how many people can't afford the cost and they're on some sort of promissory note to the district over that.
Can get that information for you?
Awesome.
We can give that list to Secret Santas.
David, you're getting whimsical. I'm concerned.
Well, I mean, I'm always fascinated that people go into Walmart and pay off the, you know, for, for some you know, for, for some stranger, and they say, okay, I'm going to pay off their, their bill. So that'd be great if somebody would step up and pay off the bill for some of our folks. But it is a little whimsical. I agree. A little Pollyanna coming out at me. All right, so that's the next step on this. Okay. Takes us to future topics. I think we have next steps lined up for several of the things we talked about today. So that, that'll roll forward to the next one. Anything else, Dick? Anything?
Yeah, I, I've seen a org chart of the Technology Department. But I'm curious. I would be curious to see a little more detail in the org chart. I'd like to see job descriptions, and I'd like to see salary and, and wage information. I know that's sensitive, but we, we got to keep it, keep it sensitive. But I have some concerns about that, and I'm sure would be answered if I could see that kind of information.
Well, if it is sensitive, then we can't put it out in board docs, and we can't, can't talk about it. So.
Have to be executives, kind of an executive session, but.
You, you can tell us whether it's sensitive or not.
Definitely sensitive. However, in our last meeting, we did provide a brief bullet point to detail by the NOC, or the Network Operating Center employees. So that provides some, what we felt comfortable providing in public. But also, their duties are often sensitive as well, and Mark can probably speak better to this. But you don't want someone who may be absent for, you know, a week on vacation. You don't want everyone, you know, the public to know that they have a specific duty of monitoring the, you know, cybersecurity and phishing attempts in the district. So not only the, the salary information may be protected, but the, it's important that we are sensitive to the specific duties they have with regard to security of our network system. So I just wanted to point that out as well. But I can, we can certainly discuss this with Dr. Rodriguez and, and the request, and see what his take is on that. And then bring any information, or allow him to bring that back to the chair and for further discussion.
All right, so you'll tell us what is, what's sensitive and needs to be done in executive session. I'm sure Wendy will give a thumbs up on, on your interpretation. That'll be the, that'll be our next step on that. Okay, Ingrid?
Thank you. This is a little more to the ed tech side. But I would like to see if we have some sort of workflow process for the implementation when we get new technology programs, or when we change vendors, how we roll that out. And, you know, so in a lot of workflow processes, one of the things is you test it, and I know we do that. And then there's like a feedback loop, like how it's actually working out in the field, which I have some, I have some reasons to believe that that part needs to be a little bit more fleshed out. I think there's a lot of technology that, that goes into the schools, and then there's a training piece, and, and there's an implementation piece, and getting feedback to see how it's actually being used. So if there is like a model that we have, or a workflow process that we can look at for implementing new technology or new vendors.
Mr. Smith?
Now, along the terms of what, what he was talking about, in terms of the, the salaries, all salaries are public dollars, and that is public information. So I was going to say, I know that, 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 well, what Mr. Guy is actually, I don't believe that that is a, that, that is public, that, that is not a public knowledge. That's private, and their positions, I, I don't believe that, that, that should be, should be private. But I do know that, I do believe that the salaries are not. And I do, and I do concur with, with, with him asking for, with that report, that he just, that he just requested as well. Thank you.
Well, we'll let, we'll let Wendy be the final, final call on what is and isn't.
And also, when she, when they bring back the answer, if they say something isn't, also, can they, can they just show us and write to, to, to help me understand? So that I can, so it can be a learning, so that I can, I can learn too. So if this ever comes back up, then I can know exactly what to go at, and to, how to defend my answer. So can they just bring us the, bring us the information that stating that why it isn't as well, and where we can find information at as well for, for further, for the references? Thank you.
I think Wendy usually gives us a site, most attorneys do.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Think we have a nice, nice full agenda for our next meeting. Now, are we on a regular basis, Robin?
No, no, sir.
I got caught off guard on this one. For some reason, I had it out there on the 27th or something. I don't know. Must have been one of those drugs they had me on. So do we want to establish a regular, regular time each month? Is that worth the effort? I know it would be an advantage to Robin, if she could schedule it.
I think we have a patch wall, have been meeting the second Thursday, because I go back and look through. No, no, not necessarily. So no, you don't have us. It's kind of been all over the place, so you don't have an established time.
It's our whimsical affair.
Go ahead. Yeah. Why don't we all, the three of us, all of us, all three of us, get to Robin on what the best day of each month would be and the best time? And then we'll, we'll set it up. Tanya?
Yes, sir, I just, just want to mention, in case you select the second Thursday of November, it is Veterans Day. So I'm not, I know that's not a school day. Not sure about Staff Work Day, but we might want to avoid that day if possible.
I have to avoid that day anyhow, because I'll be up at MUSC, so.
Well, that's what's awesome when it comes to.
I don't know, peculiar celebration of Veterans Day, but. Yeah, well, we'll, we'll see what, what Robin gets. And then we'll, we can all pitch in on, and find the best one.
He's wanted to email you, is that correct?
Ma'am?
I'm sorry, you just want us to email you and Robin, then, after the meeting, we'll.
Yeah, whatever's, whatever's best. Hopefully, something will jump out and be obvious. And then, Tanya, you, you're also included in that, what's best for you. Trying to, during the workday, how about that? And your workday is what, seven to nine?
24/7.
Just as an FYI, right now, it looks like the third Thursday is pretty open.
Works for me.
Me too.
All right, we saved a lot of emails.
You will just have to come up with a time.
Well, how does this two o'clock work?
Works for me.
Let's make two o'clock, and if anybody has a problem, let us know, and we can adjust. All right.
So it would be the third Thursdays at two o'clock. Got it?
Starting next, starting next month.
So that would be November 18.
All right. The only thing left is adjournment.
So move.
All right, no discussion. Thank you all.
Thank you.